Counsel, have you guys had a chance to review the minutes from our previous meeting?
Yeah.
Any corrections or additions that you guys found without? If not, we'll take the motion to approve that.
So moved.
Lauren second. Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda, anyone got anything to add on this tonight? We've talked about it. If not, we'll take the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Moved to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I know we got more engineering as visitors tonight, but they had to stop them at nine at first two days ago, so they'll be here as soon as they can. So we'll just keep moving on until they get here, I guess. Go to the auditor first, what do you got for us?
Nothing.
Sure, we're on that support program. Where are we at with that, or what?
Well, I was letting you two read it. Hold on, I guess I do have something. I was letting you two read it. But I was starting to think, they're based out of Texas, okay? So if we get any problems, it's all over under Zoom. So instead of them coming and setting it up here and going through it all with me, we have to do it over Zoom, unless we want to pay for airfare, motels, all that for them to be here. I was thinking maybe we should give Ferguson a call and find out who all's going with, what, locally in North Dakota, or maybe even Minnesota that does come out here and help you when you need it? You know, if their pricing's the same, maybe we should switch over from U.P. Pro to this other one? Or keep U.B. Pro just for the meters, the old meters, and the newer ones go over here? I don't know, but I think we're gonna have problems with them all the way out of Texas. And if I have, every auditor I was talking to, when they first start up, you have a few bumps, you gotta get out of the penis and out of the works, and I don't have, I won't have anybody to help me with computerized, you know? Do you think maybe I should call Ferguson and talk to them where they?
And this is that company that?
That's the company you're looking at, right there.
Out of Texas.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's a U.B. Pro, that's we've had for quite a few years already. They're already all set up in our computer, and we pay them once a year a fee. But I know, talking Stutzman County and all them go, and I think Streeters and Stutzman, they all go with this one that's kinda local, and this guy comes out and visits you and will help you out, and so I don't know if we?
I agree with you.
Has Streeter had good luck with their system, or are they still struggling? Or are they struggling?
Last I heard, yours, yeah, still had some issues once in a while.
See, Cleveland doesn't have any issues with theirs. But she said in the beginning they did the same thing.
That Streeter?
And that's why they're less, Streeter.
Yeah. And I don't know how bad it was, but it's sometimes they'll do the whole route, and then they'll get back, and then there'll be a few missed, or something will happen, or they gotta go back and do a bunch, or how, I mean, I don't think I've worked out. This was a few months ago, I talked to him, but?
See, I guess when Cleveland's is, she doesn't go out and read anything, but they only have sixty-two houses. First of all, comes right to her computer. And it even has an alarm that, let's say, this guy's toilet's running, it'll send off alarm on your phone, and she'll be on the computer and look, and it's flashing because it's got too much water going out.
I'd be in favor of, you know, looking into it.
Is our meters and stuff compatible with somebody different?
Yeah, U.B. Pro has nothing to do with the meters.
They don't have nothing?
It's the program that runs for me to bill out.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
So it's your billing program?
Oh, okay.
The meters itself would be the same?
Okay.
But I'm just worried that, they're all the way in Texas, and when I ask her, well, when you guys?
I agree.
Because we have to pay $2,000 for them to, for us to upgrade. So I have to take two days to be on Zoom with them, so they program it all on this computer. Well, what happens when I have a glitch, you know what I mean?
I think you should go?
I kinda like that other auditors right here would have the same glitch, and they've already been through it, and they could help me through it, or, you know, no, there's nobody around here that I, that I wanna talk to and has U.B. Pro. So would you, would you be upset if I called Ferguson and tried, see what other company?
I think we should, I'd sooner stay local, more local.
I mean, even if it would be feasible to keep U.B. Pro just until we got everybody over to the next program, you know? And like they do it, we do this paper that's so expensive, when they do theirs, they do it right off the computer with printing paper from here. And that, the money-wise, it's like? Go ahead.
I would say look into that, in my opinion.
Okay.
Anything else? Bill, Tom, what do you guys got?
I'm sure everybody knows what happened a couple weeks ago with, I mean, that snowstorm. You know, I don't know if we're gonna do something there as far as, or in the place that's on your agenda.
Or?
As far as cars and stuff on the street, you know, very?
I ran into this gentleman right here the other day, he was gonna look into a little bit of that, what'd you see?
So all the vehicles are registered, current vehicles?
Okay.
The only thing, like, I was talking to them, you know, we could have some type of ISO ordinance, you know, for excessive junk, or, you know, something like that, and they are?
They're registered, I mean, they're in compliance, I guess.
It spilled during the snowstorm.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a totally separate, separate issue on that. We're gonna talk about having a mandatory ordinance for removal of cars before a storm? Is that what you were thinking, something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, just anywhere I've ever lived other than here, if you park turn a storm and they're out plowing?
Yeah.
You're gonna come out and find a ticket on your car if you haven't moved it. I mean, we got people standing out in the middle of the street doing this to us and screaming at us, and, you know?
Okay.
And then? We're talking everyday cars that move, I mean, they're not, you're talking anytime and so?
They move, they just weren't moved.
Yeah. I mean, like, they're not sitting there forever, these are cars that have been driving all the time, you know, too long.
We're talking about, they're sitting there a while.
They sit a while, but they're drivable cars.
Yeah. If they're drivable, then we could ask?
I mean, I take mine to work every day, we're not talking about that one, we're talking about the ones that have been there for a while.
Right.
Okay. So we're on the same page.
You know, I think it should be a timeframe, you know, like, they start plowing at four in the morning, give them till, give them six hours. You know, like the one up here on Maine, on the north end of Maine? There's no excuse that it's sitting there all day, then maybe about six o'clock in the evening goes and moves it. Well, these guys, you know, they put in god knows how many hours already, there's no excuse for that. It wouldn't be so bad if he, you know, if they go by at four, if you get his butt out there and get it moved?
There's always, I said, several hours later, I've noticed that, too.
Or the state could even, they would back up and take another run. You know, there's no, or usually they're heading north, the state comes through first, they're heading north. There's no reason he couldn't get out there, move it to the east side, so when they come back, then they do the west side, then he could go out and move it back to the west side. I mean, it's garbage that we're, two days later, then they ditch because they're plowed in, well?
Let's not let this fall on the table, let's just get something simple, either time ordinance, you know, before the storm.
We don't have anything set forth in the past?
No.
Oh!
It's a courtesy thing as it is right now, but it's not being applied to by?
I think you have seventy-two hours per storm.
Yeah, it was very big, it was?
We took that?
Well, let's get that policy handled. I can't remember if? There's some blanks in there, it actually says, I think there's a timeframe, but you left it blank, so it really doesn't?
I think six hours might be a little much, I think, I'm just thinking like four hours, you got four hours after a snow event, if you're trying to move your vehicles, either temporarily, or move them up, you know?
Well, a lot of cases, too, these people are home as we go by.
I know.
You know?
I understand that.
There's no reason those vehicles can't be moved.
Two and four.
I agree.
You know, here's the ordinance that actually covers a lot of it.
Do you guys know what other cities have done or are doing?
So I know, like?
Napoleon?
Yeah, he's doing some stuff.
Well, so I know, like, Bismarck, they have their main arteries where, you know, they can't have any vehicles parked on there during, you know, snowstorms for, you know, the day prior, the day after, and then it just moves, and they'll kinda update where they're at, which, I mean, Gackel's not big enough to do that. But I mean, even if you put in, I mean, Steel doesn't have, I don't think, anything really in place for that, I think they just kinda tell people it's either get it off the street, or it's gonna get pushed in, you know, it'll be buried. I could talk to Napoleon and see if they have anything. That'd be easy enough to find out, find out tomorrow.
Yeah, just find out what?
Hopefully we won't need it again this year. Yeah, we got, we got about nine months to figure this out, get it amended, so you guys can get something for next year.
Yeah, I mean, we want to do it on the knowledge.
Well, just get an idea of what we gotta do, that's, that's a good start.
It's May already, man.
We got nine months, we might need it yet this year.
Yeah, here, it mentioned, it just says hours here and after mentioned, but it's left blank.
Okay. Just need it amended. We need to come up with reasonable hours that these guys are thinking, too.
And I think that, when we take a resolution, we wouldn't have to do a reading on it.
Well, if they're gonna start plowing at four in the morning, or whatever, I don't know when you guys start, but?
It's not always four in the morning, usually what we do is wait till it stops to a point, and winds what's blowing around, because there's times we've gone out at four in the morning, plowed for four hours, and turned around, drive home, and there's, you know, it's still coming down, and the wind's still blowing it, and it looks like we didn't do anything.
Or maybe worded as when the snow event is done?
Pretty much, yeah.
Then, then you have X amount of hours.
And we know if it's getting, if it's that bad, you know, we more or less do fire hall.
Do the hall, see?
Do, like, the fire and ambulance people that are in town, you know, so that they can get out, you know, something like that, so. Another thing is, too, you know, you could tell he, after he got his car shoveled out, he threw everything right back out.
Piled it up and, and one, C aimed it right in the middle of the street.
Yeah.
And pretty much blocked the street off, and they had to go back and plow that out of there.
If that happens again, we'll just?
Discuss that.
Well, I'm in favor of billing him your hourly rate?
Napoleon's against that.
Plus labor and vehicle usage.
You can't put it in the street?
No.
I don't know of any place you can.
You get fined if you throw your snow on?
I mean, you can't, you can't do that, that's, that's, that's flagrant.
Well, there's no reason?
Well, it was definitely flagrant, I mean, it was piled up.
There's no reason to be flicking you guys off and being jackasses to you guys when it's?
Well, this is fine. We'll figure out a start, and then we'll just?
Just bill them hourly rate and whatever. Payloader, or whatever, in their time.
Then you guys have the time for games, huh?
Another thing that would be, is if we wanna go up in price on a payloader or tractor rental, you know, ninety bucks is pretty cheap for a payloader rental.
Twenty bucks an hour for operator.
You know, if your fuel is getting expensive.
Okay, ran that out, like, there or not?
Well, not a lot, but, you know?
So they, it's ninety bucks, and that's with fuel and everything?
Yeah.
Ninety bucks plus twenty an hour for an operator.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see it going up from that, I don't know when.
I don't know what, I wonder what a payloader usually?
There's more than that, I guarantee you, it's more than ninety bucks an hour.
I would say a minimum would be like hundred fifty bucks an hour for a payloader, I would think.
Well, the fuel's, I think, burning an hour.
Yeah, it'll go?
It'll probably go.
It'll go through the tank, depending on how much snow there is in the day.
How big a tank?
If you charge by the hour, I mean, you're, you're making pretty good money as far as the fuel consumption.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that would cover the fuel consumption, you would think.
Right.
I don't know, whatever you guys think. I didn't know we were even writing it out, so I just, I mean, parting between?
It's up on the board, so, I mean, we don't let, if somebody wants to rent it, we don't rent it out and let them use it.
Yeah.
You know, it's Tom, or I, or Lauren, or one of you guys.
Yeah, what do you guys think? I mean, I don't?
I don't think it'd be unreasonable, and with the price of?
I think a lot of them will?
Repair parts and stuff, then most of the time it'd probably be an hour, you know, if you're going out to pull somebody out, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, ninety bucks an hour for a guy, a machine, and fuel was pretty cheap.
Right. Borrowed it not too long, I've got a ledger going out there, we'll cut you a check as soon as the secretary gets in. I got, I borrowed it for four hours during, we kept it that snow down. We'll get you paid on that.
What do you guys think?
Want to put the one fifty?
I would say. I'd say the tractor, too.
What's the tractor at?
I'll make a motion to bump the one fifty hourly rate for use of the payloader.
Second? All those in favor?
What about the tractor?
Tractor is a sixty, I believe.
Fifty?
Fifty?
Fifty.
Should move up to a hundred on the tractor.
That'd work.
So a hundred?
I'll make that amended to a hundred on the tractor as well.
Okay, so you got?
One fifty for the payloader, a hundred for the tractor.
And Jeff, you motioned it?
Yes.
Larry second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then there's a dump truck, too, if it was not?
Dump truck.
Who is that?
Is that really? Okay.
Fifty dollars an hour?
Is it up on the board?
I don't think it's up there.
Um, no.
So what do we got on that?
What is truck rental, twenty-five dollars an hour, what's that one mean?
Maybe it is the dump truck.
I think that is the dump truck.
Is it? Dump truck?
I'll put the fifty? You want more? You got people taking advantage of your dump truck?
Not all the time, but sometimes when people ask if they use it. I'd go seventy-five an hour.
Seventy-five an hour is, we can amend that, too.
So we're gonna put all three, and then with the motion for Jeff and Larry? Okay.
Okay, so we got one fifty, one hundred, and then seventy-five for the dump truck? All of, everything's gonna be, okay?
Back in March, well? Back in March, you know, we were talking about testing, I just was reading through the minutes, testing the lagoons, what did we ever decide on that?
We're gonna do it.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just started compacting, I suppose, out in Minnesota, yet there's still lies on the legacy about that, so?
I didn't know it was actually decided, or it was just talked about and left hanging?
No, we decided to do that, as long as we could do it after hours. I think it's a shame. And then, I was spreading that gravel water on the road, and I kinda backed over that twenty-five mile an hour sign up there, then it went over.
Twenty-five?
No, I was actually turning around, and I forgot it was there, and then just backed over. Just needed to get, or put up a new one, or pull it out of the ground, or, don't even put one there. Out here on Fourth Avenue going out, the highway.
Is it in the cement?
Oh.
That's in the cement.
Is it like in a city limits? Is that twenty-five mile an hour, or whatever it is, unless posted otherwise? Is that the way it is?
Yeah.
So really, would we need it out there?
It's the only, it's the only speed limit signed town, other ones on the highway.
Do we have a problem with the speeding over there that you've noticed at all, or not?
Not really, I mean, I can sit over there, but it becomes a problem.
Well, I'm just saying that you've noticed.
Most people drive really slow on there, because all the potholes, but?
Just wait till it's fixed off, it's coming.
Well, that's not good, that's, it actually got better, what Bill was telling, those , so, those potholes, it's, it's all on gravel part.
That was one thing Kevin said to remind you, because we drove past that with all the potholes. Let him know when you need him to do that over there. He said that road needs gravel bad.
Which one, the open meter?
The one he blades out over here.
Yeah, he does.
That had all the potholes.
One more.
By an ally. He said, as soon as it's, what is it, off the weight, stuff off the roads, he could bring gravel, but y'all would have to tell him.
I mean, we could haul our own gravel.
Okay.
You should there? You would just blade it for us?
So let him know when you're ready for him to blade it, Bill.
You don't really?
I mean, could we set him up on, like, just?
That's what I would say, if we just leave it to Kevin, he could just, you know, he drives it okay. And just blade it at his own discretion?
We did that, but he didn't want it to be left up to him the last time we did that. He still wanted a call from us so that he wasn't responsible. When I talked to him last year, I think it was, we brought that up.
Okay.
So he just didn't want it left up to his discretion, so it's funny.
I wouldn't have a problem with that either. Then you'd be better than that.
Okay. Uh, Taylor's not here. Jeff, you got anything?
I was talking to this gentleman here, this gentleman here, we're on this corner of Third Avenue, and they built that road up, that house on the corner there, which happens to be mine, but has nothing to do with it. The water runs into the driveway, which is paved now, was paved, what is paved. So it holds in the, holds in the driveway, and then it's seeping alongside that, and making that mailbox run, just a seeping asshole. I hauled some dirt and some bean rock in there today to clean it up, I gotta get a tractor, our little tractor battery was dead, I'm gonna bring it over there with a box scraper and see if I can clean it up a little bit, but probably I wouldn't mind that. It's just built up enough now, and instead of being at the elevation it was, that my driveway is flooded all the time, so, I don't know, if that's on, if it's on me, if it's on me, it's on me, I guess, but it was fine, but it isn't anymore, so.
Where's that?
Corner of Third Avenue. Right there.
Right there?
Yeah. This, this right here is?
Water.
Holds water now, and then I got a mailbox out there, and it's just a, a mud hole.
Can we, can we build up the edge a little bit?
Well, I just did, I just, I just built it up, so, but I don't think that's gonna result in issue of water anymore, but it will take care of those. Might be issue in the, in the, so?
It's such a tight area, there's no ditches over there, you know?
So I'm not gonna complain about it, so, not gonna worry about it. I just got that built up, so it's not a lot of money, so, won't get fixed. That's one thing to add on the streets.
We can put some of that crushed asphalt, you know, where we got?
I just gotta see what it looks like after this drying, and then, it's, I'm gonna call more this weekend.
Bigger stuff.
But I just gotta have a mess up there right now.
If we need to mill down that?
I actually love that.
Can you pour him a new driveway? No, don't, don't even start that on.
No, it's fine, I just, I'll deal with it.
That reminds me, don't forget, we're supposed to get some gravel, what is that? Right, that corner by, like, Troy and Debbie's going out to?
Oh, I led you on last year before it started snowing.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't wanna forget, like, we were talking about gravel, and so, well, let's keep an eye on that, okay? Uh, Larry, you got any?
Nope.
Lauren?
Nope.
All right, we may as well just get, go back to more engineering than just things that's been out here.
I appreciate that, I owe them, and I have to, after you guys?
Yeah, thanks for making it down here.
Construction updates, um, so, just happened to four states, June first is when they're flipping it, coming here, starting the rest of your streets.
June first?
June first, so they told us that. So, that can obviously change with the weather, but that's their current schedule, so that should, should work out fine on what we were hoping to have down here. I'll have Michael down here when they're under construction, so. They're gonna do the change order work first, those extra streets, um, that's Fourth Avenue, Front Street, Maple Street, and Birch, um, and then after that, they're, they're planning to do the patching, after that's done, they'll do the, the crack seal, chip seal, and fog seal, and finish out, so. It should be, you know, probably take them a couple weeks to do the paving, and then whenever they can get into the chip seal, it'll be a different crew coming to do that, so, June or July, because they're thinking of other things.
You're going all the way from Third Avenue west to the gravel lid?
That's, that's what you guys picked, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know, I thought it was further.
No, I thought it was just the top of the hill, I thought.
Wrong part, sorry.
You should shorten it up if you want.
You guys had decided, because that's getting so bad down past there? No, that's fine, go down to the gravel, it's working, you read it on, he is right, but if you guys were to do, that's up to you.
No, I just didn't know we were coming that far back to here. I thought it was starting, like?
If we're the road line?
Oh, I thought you meant the other, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's where it shrinks down, is where we are.
So just above the third, then?
Yeah, it's, it's not all the intersection, right?
Oh, okay. I think it would cut up to about another a hundred feet, probably, or?
Yeah.
You're right, I was just reading that.
Yeah.
God, we should just have to finish the goddamn corner, shouldn't we?
You think about it, I mean, and then you get here to reclaim, you got a month, June first.
How long's the block?
How long is a block?
Yeah.
A lot of times they're four hundred feet.
So I'd get a fourth of?
You're looking at, at Station Eight to Station Ten, you're looking at two hundred feet.
From where we're stopping to that corner?
Where you're stopping to the PC of that corner, which is where the curb starts, to that corner, so that's where the curb starts, that's where we're stopping.
That's two hundred feet.
Two hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's quite a good thing. Well, if we got a little time, maybe we'll see what it does when it gets nicer, or if it gets any worse, maybe we'll discuss it, but if we got till June or July, we can, because that'll be out of pocket then, wouldn't it?
That, well?
At that point?
We're getting close.
Okay, I just, yeah, it'd be nice to?
There's still money left for patching, right?
Yeah, there's still, you've only done about half your patching quantity.
See, I noticed right up here on Cedar, right off Maine, man, has that busted up. Right, you notice that?
Yeah. You only used one?
It's just a narrow stretch, and I don't know why it's going through the fast, through bed, but?
By the fire department, you're talking?
Yeah.
I'll have Michael get Bill the quantity that we have left, and you guys, you know, pick some more spots to do your patching. Should use it up when they're here, because prices have gone up a lot this year with oil This year with oil price and labor and. I know our, our asphalt bids are a lot closer to a hundred dollars a ton or over a hundred dollars a ton this year from what you guys are at, so. But you have a contract for that quantity, so your quantities, your price is still good.
Okay. Yeah, if you'd rather smell it.
Yeah, I'll have Michael work with Bill.
Okay, perfect.
I do have an engineering invoice. This is for, uh, work over the winter, construction engineering, the design of these other streets. Um, some survey work, we have survey crew down here. Um, it's for eleven thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and seventy cents. We're still looking to be, you know, under, at budget of our contract, so still looking fine there.
Uh, motion to approve that. So move, Lauren, second?
I'm second.
All of you favorite?
Last thing I have, um. Warren was wondering about, give me a call about some storm sewer. Study work that you guys were, were talking about, or you had some issues in the park, I know where there's some drainage issues. So I just printed this off quickly. Your, your guys' drainage issues are, are through here, obviously. So you got crossings here, on Elm, on Maple, on Spruce. Um, and then potentially impacting some of, you know, the park area and, and this home through here. So we have a water resources department in West Parkville. Uh, I'm the project manager for you guys, so I'd still be the project manager. Uh, all they do is flood control drainage studies. So, uh, we work for the faro diversion, a lot of drains in eastern North Dakota. Um, Cat's County, Barnes County, lots of these communities do projects like this all the time. Now, a lot of those are, are in rural areas, this is a municipal area. Uh, so basically, to look at this area, how they do a study is they'll, they'll model this. They'll look at the different rain events, they look at the two-year, five-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, whatever rain events you guys decide to do. To look at this drainage area. And what you would get out of a study is they would tell you the culvert sizes through here, through here, through here. Um, elevations that this ditch should be across this area. Um, if you wanted to put a, a concrete channel liner in there. You know, we could give you some, some specifications, some details on how to do a, a concrete channel. This area through the park, you know, depending on what size culverts that you guys would want to size the storm event to. They would model this almost to act as a, you know, retention pond through here potentially to. Manage the drainage here to get through this area without looking at, you know, affecting this house. But this is just real preliminary. I don't know what exactly you guys would like to do, we could figure that out later. What we could do for you though is the SRF program. Clean water SRF program through the state of North Dakota offers a fifteen thousand dollar grant to do. Storm sewer studies, drinking water studies, sanitary sewer studies, it's called PAR grant. It's called, it's the planning and. Planning assistance reimbursement grants. So they offer an eighty percent grant up to fifteen thousand dollars. So you could do an eighteen thousand dollar, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar study if you apply for this grant. And you could get fifteen thousand of it paid for through this program. Now, it's a first come, first served program. I don't know what they have left in this program right now. Uh, it's very easy, it's a one-page application. Um, you send it in, they look at the project, if the project is eligible, they send you the paperwork to, to submit and, and get the grant. I just did it for Underwood, it took me about an hour to do the application is all. Uh, and they already got their fifteen thousand bucks. So I don't know exactly what you guys are looking for here, you know, how much detail you're looking for. Um, and what exactly the drainage basins are, I would have to put those hours together later on. But if you're interested in pursuing that grant, the first thing we could do is we could, you know, apply for the study. If you're eligible, if this, if this meets it, you could get a letter from the SRF program saying you give the fifteen thousand bucks. And then we could really dive in and see exactly what you're trying to get out of, out of this area.
I don't, I'm, I'm not inclined, in my personal opinion, on spending money to have somebody tell us that you have your park and. You know what we need to do.
My concern is always down on Spruce here, you know, we got water coming from three areas. You know, it comes from the east, the west and the north. I don't know how we would. You know, the culvert that Pat put in is way out of whack.
Right.
I, I don't know, how would you address that when you got three different areas?
They'd model the whole area, so they'd model this area, everything is drained into here. Um, and then we'd look at your rain events and your, the different rain events to tell you what a two-year, five-year, ten-year storm is. And really what you'd get out of this is you get a report telling you what size culverts you need at the different locations. Um, and then it would have the, the grades that each culvert needs to get put in at, so. Elevation X, elevation Y, elevation Z at those, those crossing locations. Um, and then if you decide to put in culverts at, at a different time or right away, you use this report, you could do it on your own. We could survey it for you, you know, at a later date to make sure you get them put in at the right elevation.
Ultimately, that's exactly what we want, in my opinion, is find somebody to survey it. See if it's, I don't want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a report.
Well, you, you get eighty percent. Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying if that's the route we have to go and fix this, then then we'll have to go that way. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying you have to, I'm, I'm saying this is the most money I can get for you to look at it. Cause it's a, it's an extensive modeling effort, it's, it's probably gonna take twenty thousand to look at it. You know, I can get you fifteen of it paid for is, is my thoughts. Um, I, you know, it's, if you guys do it or don't do it.
Well, he's done, that's fast.
So you're saying it's gonna be five thousand basically out of pocket to get our.
That's what I'm, I'm saying, I don't know the exact numbers yet, but it's, it's about, it's, it's.
But I need to shoot the elevations and get that.
To shoot the elevations, we could give the elevations rather, rather quickly, that, that doesn't take long to do that across there. What takes the time is the modeling it to, to size all those culverts. So to make sure you have the right size at.
Well, the only one we need to address is down here, we gotta.
Yeah, because about eighty percent of our water comes off the top of this area down here anyway, doesn't use it.
And that culvert there is, I mean, we wouldn't look at replacing that, right? Right by.
Yeah, that one seems to depend, but if it would back up, I don't think this would be the serious one. It's always down here where the houses.
And if you're looking at just that piece, you're looking at less. So, I mean, that's, what I would, I would suggest is if you guys want to do something, you could apply for this money. If you don't get it, you know, then you, maybe you're looking at, you know, not, not moving forward or anything. If you get the fifteen thousand, you could, we could back up and, and, um. Model it or, or design it based on what you're, you're looking at, but it's an eighty percent grant. So if you only spend ten thousand, you're gonna get eight thousand from them. So. If you want a smaller area, we could put the hours together for the smaller area, I mean, I, that'll.
So you're, you're suggesting we should just get, see if we get the grant first and then move forward?
Yes, yeah, you don't, don't authorize us to do a bunch of work and then if they, if they say they're out of money. I don't, I don't leave you guys sitting there with a fifteen thousand dollar bill worth of time.
Well, let's move forward with that.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, they, they might deem this not eligible and they might say, we've already spent all of our money this year. So I would need to contact them. Um, it's probably the best percentage of a grant you're gonna get.
Sure, yeah.
You could also talk to the state water commission on this. Um, they'd probably offer sixty percent grant through a study like this, but the SRF program is a higher percentage of grants.
We just know we need from.
Yeah.
From this street.
Yeah.
There, that's our biggest.
That's the biggest.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, do we need a, we'll take a motion.
I don't know, you know, this.
Is that what this, this storm sewer?
Is that your major motion? It's just an application for a storm sewer.
Here. You know, I don't know if it's wide open or that's what, you know?
I'll make a motion to, to start that application.
I'll, I'll talk to her, make sure it's eligible, send in the application. If she deems it not eligible, um, I'll let you know and then another option would be to apply for state water commission.
Okay, do we need a second then, just to get it all rolling, a second? All of you in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
Jeff did.
I, I just wasn't inclined to quit back here, I mean, if we go, you know, in the park and then out then. Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I don't know how much of this stuff comes here.
Right.
Or if they need to model this, or you can model this. But I'll, I'll get that ironed out. So we'll just start with the application, if you don't get it, maybe it's dead in the water.
Perfect.
So I can give you a check and all, so I don't have to, you know?
That would work fine, sure. Thank you. Yep, thank you guys.
Thanks a lot.
All right, take care.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Uh, I know, we moved to old business then. We should pick a date for spring cleanup if we think we're gonna be getting closer, we've had a few people inquire about that.
We had people already putting stuff out, Bill.
Yeah.
Sounds like Larry and Jerry are getting tired of hounded, getting haunted up there, what date it is, so. I don't know why they call it a go up to ask Jerry.
It's constantly, when is cleanup?
Yeah, so we should. I don't know, whatever you guys think.
Yeah, I think like the sixteenth, that week.
I said we did the sixteenth.
Sixteen through the what then?
Through the nineteenth.
Is that what we usually do just to there?
Yeah, cause if people set stuff out on Friday.
Yeah, get done. So sixteen through the.
Oh, that's true.
Sixteen through the what?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
That's true. I said in a weekend.
And then Tom and I will make flyers up on what, cause we want everything separated with metal, you know, chairs, branches. We don't want everything just in one pile.
You got a list of everything not being picked up too then on there for everyone, so it's clear and ready?
Yeah. Get that too.
I, I just saw strippers and they had everything on the bottom with not, so that's clear and cut and dry.
What not to take?
Yeah, what not to put out, so. Everyone good with that then?
Yeah.
That's, okay. What else we got? Rock and Terry Griffith's yard, that, we're still gonna jet that, I assume?
Yeah, I think we'll try to get that culvert washed out before we pile the rock in.
Yeah, and he knows that, just wait until that, it's probably not even.
I'll try to bring that up.
Okay.
And there was another culvert you mentioned, that was, where was it? Was that down near by Dwight Wees? On the east side of Main?
Well, we got the one that went.
Oh, that's true, that one. This one right down here, that, where that storm sewer is.
Yeah, the one we went, looked at last, that fall over it.
Yeah, I heard we got too late.
Okay. Permits we got, permits. That old pool table gone?
Not yet.
Okay, I suppose during the city, okay. Well, resolution done, sewer damage. County shop, we got that done. Mention of special meeting on April eighteenth at six. That's obviously done. All right, so whoop, sorry, go ahead.
Bill, Kevin said you can bring up that anytime you want.
Good, yeah, it all depends on when we can get down there with the garbage truck.
Okay.
To get a dumpster out of there.
Okay.
So will I just be charging until he gets water, just be charging him for trash? Cause they're, they're, they're marking everything out there now. Then they got a board under the road before he gets watered, but he said he'd take the garbage truck right away, so I, well, their city bill, I'm just giving them for garbage for now. For Logan County. I mean, they're not getting water.
Is that, is that a problem, Bill, and separate later that time?
What do you mean?
It's not, I mean, waters, usually waters who are very.
No, we have all the, two other people that do just garbage.
Okay, yeah, then we're.
We'll definitely do that, okay?
Okay, um, make sure we all remember our meeting for next Monday too, for the. Tax equalization deal. At seven?
Yep.
We're gonna have to keep it, cause that was in the letters, kind of interferes with some stuff, but we'll make it work. All right, now, new business, more engineering was just here, so we're good with that. Uh, chicken policy, I talked to Lauren about that today a little bit. And we really need to get something down to get to Isaac between all of us and get that ball rolling, cause that's been. Kind of put on the back burner for too long, now we're getting more and more of this shit in town, so.
Yeah, there's a copy, everybody's got a copy of the old ordinance as it reads right now. That chapter ten.
Oh, man, there you read it a few times.
You know, really, everything's prohibited.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, so. Is that a wrong? If we go back to that?
Sherry gave, gave us this, what, month ago, two months ago?
Months ago, I, I called around to a bunch of towns who now have chickens and they gave me their new ordinances. There's a lot of good stuff in there, guys, make sure you don't make it vague like over here. You need to know where they're dumping their chicken food, where they're dumping any dead chickens. Um, how far you want them from house, you know, here. That, like Bubba said, maybe they have, should have to have two lots to be able to have chickens. And one thing, League of Cities told me, and they've been all these other cities, was make it by permit. If you leave it as an ordinance, the only way, if they're not cleaning up anything and it becomes a, such a nuisance. If it's by ordinance, we have to pay Isaac to, to take them to court and they could stay in court and we have to pay all this court stuff.
Well, permit either, we don't give it to them or we can take it away.
The permit, if you do it by permit, yeah, if you do it by permit and they're not abide by our rules, we take the permit away and they have to get rid of the chickens. Each town is, they, they've already gone through this and they said permit, League of Cities recommended.
Did you guys print through that or? I suppose it's been a while, I probably forgot.
I have more if you would like me, they, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff in there and they have good ordinance. But there's a little bit of each one.
I think what we should do is just each individually for the next, till next meeting. Just make notes of what we think that ordinance should read. Then the next meeting, we sit down and kind of compile it together.
That's fair.
Does anybody need a copy of this piece because there's good stuff?
Cause I think what we're gonna have to do is amend the one ordinance. And then adopt a new one for the chicken, we're gonna have to mend that one.
Because the saying that we can't have any.
Yeah, and I, we talked today and I know there's some other animals in town. And I don't think it's fair that we let them have it this long.
I agree.
It's gonna be some kind of grandfathered in thing or something, that we gotta figure out something fair for some of these pets. But the chicken thing, we gotta get nailed down, cause that's starting to get out of control now.
Cause I had a call, there's some new people that wanna have three chickens, I think she said.
So as of now, we have to say no, I mean, that's in the ordinance. Um, but we gotta get this done, so it's, we're gonna have a fight on our hands.
We should've said, we should've got this done when it first came up, cause no one was.
I, we kind of screwed that up, you know, but.
We had all the street stuff going on.
We just need to, so if you guys get some copies and please read and adjust or add some things. Um, like I said, we're gonna have to figure something out with some of these other animals to make it fair, but also in the future, let it know that it's not gonna be happening, so.
You're, you're saying the people have them, it's gonna be grandfathered in?
Not the chickens and everything, we just gotta figure out what's fair as of right now. Um. If, I guess the people that have chickens now are just gonna have to fall, fall under the new ordinance. As far as the permit goes, you know?
And I know there's a house in town that has a pet pig.
Yeah.
You know, that's the one. It's a pest, there's young kids in the house. So they've never been grandfathered in, but require that they have a permit.
It's a tough, I mean, they've never had anything called in, it's never caused a nuisance, I just. So I, yeah, we just gotta figure out something that's fair to everyone, I guess, but. Uh, other than that, I guess, I just, we gotta get this done by next month, so we get it to Isaac. And then we gotta have two readings on the one that we're adopting, so.
And then we also need Isaac to do the ordinance on the back flow.
Oh, shit.
Ordinance.
Bill, that's all you.
I'm sorry.
You're the one that pushed it last minute, so. No, we gotta get that done, yeah.
So we got two ordinances and then one amendment, right?
Okay, any other questions on that from you guys? Good, okay, so we'll move on. Uh, date for spring cleanup, sorry, we got that one ready.
Yeah.
Gordon Heller, Shinglin permit, uh, permit for Jonathan. And Eve Nyberg for fence.
Yeah.
Who's that?
That is the one that lives in the.
Two hundred second avenue, west.
Well, that's the one you're talking about, asking about the fence thing.
Yeah, but they are putting in, I mean, they are putting in posts and stuff and it's in their front yard.
I think we should require a permit.
Well, anything that was zero to two thousand dollars. Well, anything from zero to two thousand dollars is ten dollars.
Yeah. Okay, uh, motion to accept the shingling for Heller and the permit for fence, move to approve the permits, second?
I'll second now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did they call, one call by the way? Do you know if they called one?
Um, I.
I strongly advise them to.
I never got enough of them.
I would, I didn't get anything either.
I suppose they're about done, I don't know.
Yeah, but I would probably not think so.
Nine hundred bucks when I hit that, I was telling the board that time, that was.
I would say they didn't, because I didn't see it coming either, and they were shocked, you even had to have a, a permit to put the windows in or anything else, anything you wanted to do, it's grouchy.
You were lucky, we cut one down the cullum some years back, they said it was, would have been close to a million bucks.
Fiber off.
That was a big, big fiber off, it was pretty dislocated, by God, by about ten feet.
Oh, jeez.
Let me get the damn thing.
Nice. Alright, anything else, guys? Uh, we'll take a look, I, we were all looking at the bills earlier, you guys got any questions on them?
What was that like, energy for twenty-eight hundred?
That's to fill all the tanks.
Oh, okay.
It's winter time, we, we've had those for, yeah.
Alright.
Oh, a few tanks, so, for here, for the shop, pooping, pooping, or whatever it is.
Yeah. Anything else, guys? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the bill, move to approve, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, obviously our water bills are looking good, then I'll see a copy of them.
Um, yeah, they're on my desk at home, I thought I had everything.
Nope, that's fine.
We only had one.
They looked good last month, so.
They, they looked good, we had, ah, I think one that I sent out a disconnect, but I send it out every month.
Yeah, well, you're on top of it, so we're good.
So, I only really have one, and other than that, everybody's so good.
Is everybody okay with, uh, Monday, June sixth at seven PM?
Are we gonna keep the seven PM?
I'll let it go to me now. Yeah, we'll keep it for another month, and just play it by ear, if you think we should switch, we'll switch, but, okay? Alright, Monday, June sixth at seven PM, uh, motion to adjourn, move to adjourn, Lauren second, all those in favor? Meeting's over at seven fifty-two.